Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilman Duitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Well, good morning, everybody, and we're gonna start with public comment on agenda items. Anybody that would like to speak from the public, please come forward.
Where do I go?
Right over there, how's that?
That sounds great.
Hi, everybody. Well, first of all, a little present for Arlene. I thought this would be an appropriate.
Boss lady.
Yeah, I thought she liked that. Oh, thank you so much.
Okay. So, um, I was having budget time. Budget time is when you show your priorities. Getting the water right, big priority for us, preserving, um, you know, our conservation lands. The quadrant, I saw that there was a reduction in road impact fees. I hope that doesn't mean that there's a reduction in will to get the work done. I got two little things, you know, the cats and the rolling over. Rolling over, once again, the streetlight project on Pennsylvania Royal, because we need to get those replaced. Got my little email yesterday about dark skies. About going to the state to get money. They don't like to give up their money. They wanna see you leverage your authority, your taxing authority, before you take the money from what they've put out their political will to tax and get money, you know, like their communication services taxes. So, while I appreciate, and I am a fiscal conservative, let's get some work done, let's get some results, let's get some things fixed that are really the big items. And, uh, please don't roll the taxes back too much, you know what I mean? Because now is the time to fix problems. You got big problems, need fixing, y'all know them, you're studying them, you know, you're putting yourselves out there for nine hundred dollars a month. I mean, you know, this is a sacrifice for you and your families, for you serving here, and so we really appreciate that. And we really wanna see, like, the quadrant, you know, not Carolina Street necessarily, but anyhow, that done. I don't think we even got the landscaping done that we did, you know, like, six years ago. So, let's just stick to our priorities, and please don't roll the taxes back too much, okay? Or at all. I don't mind if you raise them. That stormwater assessment, frankly, you guys need to do that, because we had that horrible storm that flooded downtown two thousand six, nine, I don't know. Anyhow, Alex Grant ran for city council a second time around, he was, it was a drought, okay? And he was always saying, "We're gonna flood, we're gonna flood, we're gonna flood." Well, he lost, because everybody's like, "We're having a drought, who floods?" Our memories can be very short, you know, but we've gotta remember that the infrastructure is so important. So, thanks, guys, I know it's expensive, but do the best. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Oh, can we please have another one or two code enforcement officers? We're behind, those guys are squeezed. I think we had the same number we had when we started off this little city venture, you know, when we became a code enforcement department. Sorry, neighborhood services. But, in order to get the, the quality of life and, and people needing to understand, you know, how to maintain their homes or businesses. And we've got a project coming up in 2020 that's gonna need more enforcement, uh, the light thing. You're gonna really need some more people. So, maybe you can throw that in the mix. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Good morning, Ben Hertz in Gulf Country Club area. Normally would be heading back to me at this point, but, you know, I always got something to say. This is very important, seriously. I, I, I just wanna speak in general, saying that I, I support 100% the CIP. I think it's a, you folks have done a fantastic job in being proactive. It's just two years ago, we all know what we all, what went through. And what you, what decisions you make now with respect to the budget, and specifically regarding stormwater management and mitigation, is what's gonna prevent this city from undergoing what we just went through a couple of years ago. So, anything at all in that whole general area of improving or mitigating stormwater management, I don't think anybody in the Gulf Country Club area would be opposed to it. But that does bring me down to a very specific point, and that obviously has to do with the golf course. I think it's an excellent, uh, plan to hopefully purchase that golf course for stormwater management, storage kind of facility. Kind of looking at, going back to the Beaver Report, absolutely fantastic. I think things are falling in the right place. Commend you all for doing this, and for those who might be a little bit reticent about it, just think of the decisions you make today is what's gonna make us tolerate tomorrow a lot better than we're able to do in the past. So, again, good luck with your deliberations, but I just had to put that couple of two cents with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
I apologize, I'm nursing a stiff neck, so my little pack here is ice packs. I had them yesterday.
Anybody else from the public? Okay. Seeing none, we're gonna move along. We're gonna start with the discussion and direction concerning our budget for the 2019, 2020 year. Arlene, do you wanna kick us off?
Yes, good morning, mayor and council. We've left your budget books the same as the general material, and there has not been any significant changes. What we did is outlined the changes from our last meeting in this meeting. And the first off is to discuss some of the city council members' requests. And we did, uh, look at the CIP and identified, uh, an increase for the, um, in the road impact fees to five million for the, um, for the Sun Trail project. It did correspond with a slight decrease, um, in the quadrant, but that is because we plan on future for out years. We are, we are able to move forward with the northwest quadrant as is and as planned with the funding you have provided, and we have the opportunity to, to fund that in, in further out years as we progress with plans for each of the additional quadrants. Additionally, we did reinstate the 750,000, um, that was requested from the state funding as well, and that was as a proposal. We've moved it one year out. The changes that staff are requesting at this time is that we would like to increase, uh, the CIP by 400, for funding for 475,000 dollars, and this is for an extension of the improvements we're doing on the Terry Street project. This is, um, the pocket park that we discussed, um, as well as making sure that we have appropriate funds for any land acquisition remaining for the project. We've also had a increase, um, to the budget request in operating expenses to 45,000, and this would be for code violation abatement, and that would be when the hearing examiner determines that there is a need for an abatement to occur on the property, that we have the funds and able to do that, and then any remaining fines would be then addressed back to the property. Uh, when collections would be have to be in the future. One of the things we've noticed is some of the projects coming forward by the, by the code enforcement department are especially, they were putting priority on in these abatements is when it's stormwater related. So, we have some vacant properties that vegetation has become overgrown, it's blocking, on private property, it's blocking their particular drainage systems, and we'd like the opportunity to go ahead and mitigate that as quickly as possible so it doesn't cause issues with others. I did need to bring up one that we didn't address in the green sheet, but the mayor did receive a request from the outreach committee for a thousand dollars. That would be a discussion for council to have. They had requested the mayor bring it forward for miscellaneous costs during the year. They mentioned the possibility of funds being utilized for committee polo shirts, banners, operational costs, et cetera. And that's from the outreach committee to the mayor. And additionally, we have the proposed changes to the preliminary taxable values that we received in addition of 104, uh, 104, 600, 100, uh, 104,0600 dollars to the general fund ad valorem. And the increased ad valorem tax revenue for FY 2020, and the increased Lee County funding for FY 2020 from the downtown area revenue sharing fund as well. So, we're here for any questions you have on these, uh, changes.
Counsel? It's your pleasure.
Just a thanks there for, um, going back on that money for Sun Trail, but it is road impact fee money, it's not general fund money. And I think that puts us in a better stead. Moving forward, we're trying to attract other monies. Thanks for doing that work.
And we would be looking for a motion for these items upon your.
So, move.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, council, is there further discussion?
Is that with the thousand dollars for the outreach?
Yeah, with the, where would that be, I'm sorry, under the?
Operating expenses.
Operating expenses, okay, yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Councilman Duitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Uh, aye.
I'm sorry. I'm in the doghouse, aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
One other item we wanted to address with you, the mayor has been, has had an outreach from Commissioner Hammond, I believe, and the Lee County staff has reached out to our staff to discuss what will be coming forward with the local gas tax and the agreement. So, that would be forthcoming, they have not provided us with an update on that information yet, but as soon as we have it, we'll forward it to you as well.
Right. Now, and to be transparent, and Brian's a friend, and, but I took that opportunity when Brian called, and I, I'm positive we will work through that process. Having spoken with Arlene, I think there's some other things that we can look out, look at differently than our last deal with the county on the gasoline tax, Arlene, and I look forward to those discussions. I also took the opportunity to express our disappointment, um, on the mining issues and some environmental issues, and Brian said, I said, "Brian, look, if you and I can't be honest with each other, there's no sense in us, you know, being elected officials." And he appreciated the criticism, he really did, I mean, he took it well, and he said, "Peter, we're not gonna agree on any, everything, but we certainly look forward to our continued relationship with Benita Springs and working together, X, Y, and Z." So, I just wanted to, you know, express that as well.
Can I ask, Arlene, where are they going with the gas tax? So, the gas tax, those agreements expired as of a certain date, right, for all of the municipalities, is that what they?
They amended our, I think they're originating a five-year through, through August 31st. Cape Coral's actually extends through 2023.
Oh, they stayed that way, okay.
But we understand from the correspondence with staff is they would like all of the jurisdictions to be on the same methodology.
Right.
And so, they are working through that right now and providing some feedback to us.
Right, but methodology is one thing, but what's gonna change in terms of anything in that, in terms of the dollars we receive?
Right, that's gonna depend on the, the, how they look at reviewing it and what it looks, one of these scenarios, I believe, kept us similar to where we were. One of the scenarios, there was a different scenario that we would receiving, um, a little bit less in funds. It wasn't a significant, but I think there are other jurisdictions that have a much signif, a larger significant change that they would be looking at.
And how do we participate in that conversation with the county?
I understand that the outreach first happened to the mayor, and at that point, they reached out to us to provide some alternatives, and we would then have to provide the alternatives to you all to, to review at a council meeting.
Oh, okay.
And then I think there should be some correspondence between the elected officials, probably.
So, there's intended to be a dialogue?
Oh, absolutely.
Well, what I can see the correspondence.
And from my point of view, absolutely.
Right, I know from ours.
Yeah, ours is always like that.
Right.
Right.
It doesn't go the other way.
We would, as soon as we have addition, the, the breakout from them, we will forward it to you all as soon as we have it.
Right, once we have something to look at.
From what I understand, the mayor would like to have that as an agenda item to discuss with you all as soon as we have it.
And we'll invite the county to come down and discuss it if they'd like, and I'm sure they probably will.
Ken, just, if I may.
Absolutely.
Ken, we see what Collier has for taxes. The only reason I say that is we're so close to Collier County that we wouldn't want our constituents, if it's, you know, a couple cents cheaper, going right up to, just to the county line, it's a little different. So, we can just check that to see.
Do we have it?
Good point.
They're considering changing the county, the tax itself, or just the proportion that we get?
The portion that we get.
So, the tax is gonna remain the same as it is?
I had, yes.
Right, this is an allocation.
This is the allocation that we received, and it would be based on the methodology, whether, you know, population, lane, number of lane width and.
Road miles, miles, miles down.
So, so we know which one we would prefer, because we would wanna get it most advantageous to us?
We would be able to calculate it based on the methodology.
So, you, you expect them to come back and say, "We're gonna calculate it, uh, according to, uh, population," and then we'd figure out whether we like that or not?
Correct.
But they wanna do that for everybody, not?
They want every jurisdiction to be on the same methodology, and right now, they are, they are not.
Let's do it till 2022, so we all renew at 2022 or whatever, and then they're gonna say, "We're all gonna do it on population." So, it'd be difficult to have, if we wanted a one that was different from what they were gonna do in over the whole county, to say, "We're gonna do a special one."
The, the correspondence we've had is that they want every single jurisdiction on the same methodology.
And right now, there are separate agreements.
Correct.
With Sanibel, with Cape Coral, et cetera, they've been in place for quite a while.
Yeah, 30 years they've been in.
But are they all on the same mechanism?
No, they're, they're the same mechanism, but different form, different weighting.
Different weighting?
Weighting in them.
Okay, now we get it.
Okay.
We definitely need a discussion.
Yeah. The, um, streetlights and the TNR program still in here?
Correct, at the same funding level as last year.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Matt? Derek, Ann? I guess I should say Ann.
I, I guess the only other thing is, we could have, in theory, a reduction in the gas tax receipts after we set our, when are they intending to do this, in August?
We're, we're expecting in August.
Okay, so we'll know by September.
Counsel? It's your pleasure.
We're setting the millage tomorrow, correct?
Well, we've placed it on this agenda, just at the millage today, but, um, but if you need additional, we can always do an errata and have it also, an addendum to the agenda and also have it addressed tomorrow if you need more time for discussion.
Anybody wanna make a motion? You wanna discuss it? Yep, Fred?
Well, before we, uh, get into this, let me, let me tell you something that I've mentioned this, um, briefly to the council. There's a constitutional amendment on the 2020 ballot. And I would say there's a high chance it will pass, it deregulates the electrical generating industry. Part of that constitutional amendment, it does away with your FPL tax, franchise tax, which amounts to three thou, three million, 500,000 dollars in the year after that. So, you may wanna think about that, and now, and I don't wanna hear about, oh, we're planning about some potential, because the way they're selling the amendment to the consumers, who, everybody in the room is a consumer, is that if you pass this, it's gonna save you money on your electric bill. So, there's a high degree probability that it will pass. Now, there is some court challenges, and I'm sure if it does get passed, that FPL and the people that are in the business now will file a thing in the federal courts, because I really don't understand part of it. Part of it is that if it passes, you have to get bids for your electric service, everybody. But FPL and the guys that are in the business now are excluded from being able to bid. And that would be like when they deregulate the airline industry, all the new start airlines can, you can buy a ticket from, but you can't buy tickets from Delta, American, all the big guys that are in the business. They didn't do it that way, but that's what's being proposed, so I'm just, I just wanna let you know about that. I know Florida League of Cities is putting out information on this, about, about the situation, that it's fairly complex. The bottom line is if it passes, that three and a half million dollars that we would be getting, so.
That wouldn't happen in this budget fiscal year?
No, but the reason I'm bringing this up is for example, we decided to roll the taxes back this year. And that passes, now you gotta roll, if you're gonna try and recover that three and a half million, you got two choices. Tighten your belt by three and a half million in a year, which is a big, a bunch of notches that aren't even in the belt you're gonna have to pull it in, or raise the ad valorem, and if, and so you would be raising it even more if you cut it back now. That's, that's all I'm saying, just, just giving you for fair warning of what I know. And you can verify, you can talk to a lot of other people, don't go by what I'm saying, but it's, it's there. It's, um, there's a little argument now in our state Supreme Court over the wording on the ballot. But the odds are it's gonna be, go forward, and if it does, I would think because it's gonna save you money, it probably passed. Because there's a lot of things that passed on this last thing, you know, amendments. It should not have passed, but they passed, so here you're offering that carrot, not save you money, so enough said.
Um, you're already to move to item B, so we would, so we've gone over the preliminary changes. This is, this is the approv, approval of the capital projects improvement plan, and we, we do need a motion on this as well, and this includes, um, the five million in road impact fee change and the stormwater CIP for the 750,000 from the state legislature.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, council, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Duitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
So, we're voting to give five million dollars to the Sun Trail, and we're voting to approve the stormwater drainage program?
So, that's the 750,000 that we would be looking to receive from the Florida Legislature, so that's not the, it's the, it's the funds we had previously in this fiscal year, but we've heard from the legislature we wouldn't be getting those funds.
So, we're not gonna get this money?
We moved it out one year.
Rolled it forward.
We moved it forward to the next year, because we found out in this year we wouldn't be receiving those funds from the state. So, we've, we're putting it in next year in hopes that we would receive the funds from the state next year. We'll also put that in any correspondence and any applications we have to the state that we've put in our capital improvements.
So, when Rod Regis talks to us tomorrow, we can ask him about that?
And we can tell him also that we've approved it.
And we could tell him that we approved it, right?
We approved it, yeah.
If the motion.
Put that on a green sheet.
And all the changes.
We have longevity on this issue. We're committed, more than ever.
All of the changes that, since the last time you saw this, are highlighted in, in light green, large sheets.
Okay, aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba. Aye.
Item C, Arlene?
Uh, this is the review to, to the five-year financial plan, and we, we do need a motion on this one as well.
There's, I need to.
Are you sure?
Yeah, this is just to let you know that the update on the five-year financial plan, it's been updated based on the changes that you just approved. Additionally, the assumption on the ad valorem tax, um, we're able to consider what our increase was this year to, uh, to affect those five-year amounts going forward. The other thing, uh, just to mention to you, just briefly, um, the, it looks like the, the state process for reimbursing us, because the state actually sends us the theme of reimbursements, um, looks like they may be accelerating their process, so we may see some additional changes with how quickly the money may actually be coming into us, so, so we'll, we'll see. They're, they're doing, um, a little bit of a focus on getting money out, and to a certain extent, they're gonna give, like, progress payments, possibly, uh, just to get money out faster if they haven't fully completed their audits.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we had in the current, in the budget that we're working on an allocation for two million something dollars that we think we're gonna get, is that already, we already have noticed we're getting it, or we're just anticipating that?
No, in the FY 2020 budget, there is nothing budgeted for that. Uh, there's two million dollars coming in, but that's, uh, that, that's transferred from another fund. To put it in.
I'm sorry? What did you say?
But, once, once we actually receive the money, we're adjusting the budget.
What the, what the question is that we don't anticipate, we haven't already anticipated that money coming, coming in, in our budgeting process?
Not in the budget, but in the five-year plan, we put it out into FY 2021.
Okay, well, I guess maybe that's where I saw it.
Yeah, that's where you see five million dollars.
So, it's not this coming, but year, but the following one?
But we're anticipating to get it. And, and the reason we did that was because we wanna wait to actually amend the budget until we actually have it.
I understand that, I, I just was wondering, um, where it would be. I'm focusing more on the underside fund balances or where we're getting it, that's where.
Right, right.
Thank you.
So, Arlene, do you need a motion on this for the five years?
If, if you'd like to, you can have a motion on it to review and accept it.
I'll make that motion, thanks.
There's been a motion and a second, council, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr. Aye. Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
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 Item D, Arlene?
Last item we have for you is to establish the proposed operating ad valorem military for the 2019 tax year for trim notice and to confirm, uh, the September budget hearing dates. What I wanted to discuss is, um, currently, we have our budget hearing date for September 4th, and I understand that not everyone can be here for that date on September 4th, so I wanted to bring it to your, all its attention to see if we wanted to revise that date.
That's our final.
That's, no.
Your first?
That's your first, with the final being September 19th.
Okay.
I'm available, wow, I'm available anytime, you asking for availability?
Yes, please.
Week of the ninth? Any day.
And what's the difference? It's got to be so many days.
Right, if you, you have, um, to advertise a thousand.
The first, the first five to hearing is to be dated on the 3rd and the 18th of September. After you hold that meeting, you have to advertise within 15 days.
Right, that's 15 days, that's what I was thinking.
And then you have to hold your final due date, but, so, hearing between two and five days.
I guess my question is, are, are we still having our meeting on the floor? There's, I mean, there's not enough, do we have enough for a quorum on the floor?
I'm, I'm out of town, but I can be on the phone, but it doesn't help.
Just a, just a question.
Well, we, we do, we still are planning our city council meeting on the floor, unless you all want to revise, that's a decision of council, if you'd like to revise that meeting.
I feel like we're up north, where school starts right after Labor Day, but we're not, we're a month off, but anyway. From a parental point of view.
I'm out of town on the force as well, and I can't be on the phone.
How about the 9th? Can we, can we do it 9th?
We can do the 9th, and that meets the budgeting schedule.
I can't do it at 9th, I can maybe call in, so I got, I got the city, or the party department.
I have a luncheon that day, and I'm.
I mean, we do morning.
Yeah, but other than that, I could meet on the 9th.
I think, isn't that the date of the, well, the charter revision council meeting or something?
They were looking to try to also skip, we, we haven't finalized that, but they were looking to try to have it on that, the 9th.
We could do, I mean, the budget is, doesn't take that long, we could do both of those, right, in the morning?
It has to be after 5:00.
What time is yours?
What time do you have to be out?
I mean, mine's at 5:00.
Isn't that 5:00? Hopefully, we'll have a 10-hour meeting.
No, I mean, I could actually be out at like 5:30. Make it 5:30 then.
You could, it just has to be after?
5:30, 5:00.
It has to be after 5:00.
It'd be at 6 o'clock if that's, if you wanna do it.
Has to be after 5:00.
I mean, I don't care.
On the 9th, 6 o'clock? Yippee, that good for you?
It works.
Okay, the 9th at 6:00 PM? Okay, which will replace September 4th at 5:05.
So, we're still having our city council meeting on the floor?
We are, that's, unless.
So, it's just a budget meeting?
It would just be the budget meeting.
Yeah.
And tomorrow, we, we had to discuss how you'd like to handle that joint meeting with the. We would need a motion to change the date to.
So, moved.
Well, we wanna confirm both dates, the September 9th at 6:00 PM, and is everyone still available? I, I do know we, maybe you're not for the September 9th. still available, I, I do know we, maybe you're not for the September nineteenth.
September nineteenth, I'm out, but that's just the, that's the final.
Doesn't matter, as long as you have a quorum.
So moved.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, further discussion on changing the meeting dates? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Blen?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Ford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Grubba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Ford?
Aye. So, mayor, we did place on this agenda the opportunity for you all to discuss, um, setting, setting the, um, proposed operating ad valorem millage rate today. If there's some reason you need some additional time, you can also extend that discussion to tomorrow, we can do an addendum, um, but what is your finalized date that you actually have to have in August four?
August four, that's, that's the, the deadline that we have.
Okay, council, what's your pleasure?
Well, I had a question for, uh, Matt and Arlene, to figure out what the millage rate would be if we did not do the stormwater fee, but if it was put into the, uh, general fund under, you know, on taxes, property taxes, so, I, I was just wondering what we were looking at, what would that number would be?
Take under additional one point five million?
Yeah, correct.
Point nine five nine three?
Point nine five nine three?
That was for the whole...
For the one point five additional revenue.
That was the entire amount of the...
Stormwater.
This is, uh, you've seen the, the four of the different millages.
Mike, your question, I think, is more or less what my ques... I think, are you saying, Mike, if you were to back that out, that fee out, like, what would that be for the stormwater project? Sorry about the feedback.
Yeah, correct, instead of adding a new tax, if we were to put it in on the millage rate, what would it be?
Right, correct.
I, I think people pay more attention to the millage rate than they are paying attention to that we're adding any tax.
Correct. I agree.
So, if I'm reading this correctly, um, if you had a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, your increase would be twenty-one dollars, is that correct? Am I reading this? And if you had a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house, your increase would be thirty-five dollars.
A year?
A year. And it says, all right, so for a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house, the tax bill is, I don't know what it is now, but here you would have it as thirty-seven hundred dollars, total tax bill, that's everybody, the county, the, is that right? Of which, of which the city, the fire district, the school board, et cetera, it says mosquito control, hyacinth control, thirty-seven hundred, of which the city is two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
No, no, that's...
Uh, 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 assuming the increase, right?
Correct.
That's without any bonuses, save our homes, or any of that.
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
And that, okay, are you done, Pete, I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah, I'm done.
Yeah, no, no, that's good, so what my question would be, and maybe this is Mike's, Mike's question, I'm not sure, if our millage rate were to stay the same, exactly flat as it is, but given the increase in valuation, what's that number, Ann?
I'm sorry, oh, the rollback? No, 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 he asked if we keep everything flat.
If we flatline everything, but based on values that are going up?
The new values that we...
What's that versus, versus, what's that number versus this number?
Different between rollback and today.
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
Can you rephrase it? There's a rollback, it's a difference between the rollback and what it is.
Want to know the, the rollback?
Yeah, what would, what would we lose if we went to the rollback, because that would be the same number?
Yes.
That would be the same number.
Three, three hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Right.
But, um, Arlene, could you just remind me, because I don't know those numbers in my head, but...
Two hundred, I'm sorry.
Figures we were talking about for the utility fee don't seem very much different from these.
So, what?
E R U units that we just sort of subject, what, what were they?
Maxed, they were maxed at fifty dollars for single-family homes.
Okay, maxed.
So, what this does is spreads that across, it, it doesn't use the user methodology of the system.
So, it's, it's evenly distributed out, uh, throughout all units in the city, based on their quote usage of stormwater services, or whatever it is we...
That's the E R, what you just described is the E R U approach, um, which is fifty dollars for single-family residential, it's based on impervious for commercial properties. Um, here, it's, it's just spread across the...
There's no, and there's no guarantee that this, we don't have this pot of funds that we could apply to what we think is our most critical service, which is stormwater management, because that's our objective. It would go into the general fund, and each year we would have to say, we're gonna do X, Y, and Z. And the other issue that I have about not going forward with the utility fund is that a lot of these communities who, and I think we're gonna hear about this tomorrow, because we've explored what the situation is citywide, need special kinds of infrastructure in order to improve their situation. Isn't that correct, or no?
I think what you're alluding to is special assessments for, for neighborhoods, and so a stormwater utility would allow you to, to address it on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, and you wouldn't necessarily have to address it citywide.
So, we have two things, we have things that are citywide, like what we're doing for Pine Lake Preserve, and, and then some other things, and that take care of the major invasions that we have throughout the city, and then we have some things that are just particular to a neighborhood. That's the nature of what we need to have done.
Right?
Questions along the same lines, Matt. With the stormwater management system, if, say, uh, my neighborhood wanted to do some special one, ditch is cleaned out, we wanted that, we were willing to pay for it, because that has to come before the city council, or is that just part of the stormwater management system, we've elected it, we've got, let's say, ninety-five percent of the people within that geographical area, we wanna do it, we're willing to pay for it based on a tax? Because here's where I'm going to, if we do it this way, then if my neighborhood wanted to do it, we'd have to come to the city, get the blessing of all seven of us to do it, or at least four of us, at least four of us, yes. And maybe have, I'm not gonna stretch this, yeah, but, or maybe have it pulled away from like a wall of some sort.
That's gotta say, Arlene, listen, you're walling my highway monument, buddy, their, their faith is length.
Exactly. I guess what I'm getting at is, is the storm, does the stormwater management give us more flexibility rather than get every one of us getting, you know, whether it's politic, that, hey, we don't want this, we want it over here, we need the money there, not that.
Sure, sure answer is, is no, if you're gonna have, whether you adopt a stormwater utility, that doesn't prevent you from doing special assessment districts for specific neighborhoods, it could be, because the stormwater utility is, is basically collecting for everything in order to have a revenue source to deal with issues. Now, you can deal with those issues without, on your own, without inputs from community, but let's say a community comes in and says, we want additional improvements, and we treat it as existing, you already have the authority to create a special assessment for that purpose, you could do that, if you did it even under the stormwater utility, still a special assessment, you're probably still borrowing, so there's gonna be approvals at the city council level, either way.
The difference, and Derek's correct, but the difference is, you would have already established a special assessment district, so if, if your neighborhood came and said, we wanna pay for X, Y, or Z over the next thirty years, you wouldn't have to go through the process of creating that special taxing district for them, which is onerous, you would have already established that, and so you could, you could talk to your neighborhood about what the needs are, and what the costs are that they would finance, and so you, it's, you've already pre-established that, that district.
And then they would have...
I try one, I try one thing here, though. My understanding is, if we have a stormwater utility, you could fund it, I, I'm, Mike's not suggesting, he's asking, let's say, but you could fund it from ad valorem, you could, you could fund it from special assessment, you could fund it from other purposes.
Correct.
That's correct?
Correct.
Or a combination of all of the above, obviously.
The, the one thing you, you wouldn't do...
Right.
Under millage, is you wouldn't pledge the millage. You could still pledge to a bond coming, coming, but you can pledge the special assessment money from the stormwater, stormwater utility.
But you've just framed my question, my, my question and my question alone. If we were to leave the millage rate as it is right now, the increase in our value over the past year is how much, Ann? Versus what this would cost, is what I'm getting at.
Well, the, the value...
You can't pledge the millage, I get that, so we'd have to call it something different, but the thought, the process, is where my mind is, is, that's where my mind is.
The new construction is four hundred and twenty-six million, seven thirteen.
Right?
Yeah, I, I, I see everybody's point here, and here's, here's the thing I'm most concerned about. Number one, what we've, what we're starting out with the stormwater management district citywide, which, like it or not, I happened to be the first one to mention that on the green sheet, and then, nothing happened for a while, and then, then we, I think we had Irma or whatever, and we are, we're saying we're only gonna go for fifty bucks a home, or whatever. That's gonna produce not a heck of a lot more money than we're already spending on stormwater management, and guess what, we had Irma. If you think that that's gonna crack the nuts, you're crazy, because it's gonna take a lot of money to do any major improvements in this city, especially in some of the areas that are what you wanna call flood-prone, I think, but I see Mike's point of view, that if we adopt this, we are in effect adding another tax. I think the right thing to do is to put this on a ballot, twenty, put in monies that will be sufficient to really do some meaningful projects, not these little things we've been doing. Let the people vote on it, I'll campaign for it, I, I fully agree with it, but I think there's, we need to get something done, and going out and selling this on a little fifty-dollar thing, I know what's gonna happen, once we do it, and adopt it, then it's gonna start inching back up, because you have to do it if you're gonna do it. So, that, that's, that's kinda where I'm at on this.
Yeah, but you're gonna do it either way, either it inches up through a formular assessment, or it inches up through the taxes.
Right, and I...
It's not a magic, it's not a magic, uh, combination, it, it's gonna have to come somewhere.
Right, I agree with you, right, and I would rather be forthright and full transparency, put it out on some figures that would, when we advertise it in, for twenty ballot, with reasonable higher numbers to produce some kind of decent-sized project per year. That doesn't still mean that we couldn't, at some point for a really big project, it's important, dip in and take some ad valorem out to supplement, but that, that's what I think.
Well, and I, I, I agree somewhat with you, councilman, I'm just thinking, why not do both, if we think we need some projects, you know, let's, if we have to raise the millage up, you know, a couple hundred, couple hundred thousand dollars to point eight four seven three, it gives us three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, and still do the stormwater management, that way you're taking from both buckets instead of...
I, I would agree with you, if the numbers were right, but if you're a project that's gonna be of any consequence, you're gonna be spending way over a million, two million dollars in the crap.
Yeah, but I don't think, I'll just put it out there, I don't think this board, this council's gonna raise the millage to point nine five. Tell me if I'm wrong, because I'll be the...
No, I, I don't.
If you guys wanna do it.
Yeah.
Because we tried it last year for projects, and it was a little bit fresher in our memories in Irma and all that, and it fell on deaf ears, so I don't see us raising the millage.
And that's why I'm saying, I think we need to be, put some numbers in that are really realistic, put it on the ballot, let the people speak, and I think that it would pass, it might not pass by an overwhelming majority, but I think it would...
Yeah, but we don't need it the past two years from now, a year and a half from now. They need to release today, or at least project starts.
I would be willing to vote, uh, to adopt all this stuff and move forward.
I believe there's a two-step process, we can authorize utility mechanism, and we don't have to fund it. It, it's there where the people can speak, so to speak, and even, and to have that mechanism, we can focus all our attention on the projects you're talking about. So, I think we came up with a million and a half because we looked at what we were already doing, you know, it's sort of like the current expenditures, and that's how we came up with the meeting, the, the, the amount.
E R U.
You know, so, these, we have ongoing CIP projects that we're trying to get funding for and all that, but there's gonna be, I think, out of the, the work that's been done by the staff, there'll be others, it'll be amazing, but I think, over time, we're gonna have. So, on an annual basis, we could, we could review all the proposed projects and decide whether that's where we wanna prioritize and not, it just gives us more flexibility to operate. And I, and I agree with Greg, you know, to, to cover that with ad valore, in fact, even if we went to whatever this is, nine five nine, are we already over what we can, what's our maximum that we could do?
The maximum millage?
Yeah.
Uh, is one point one nine nine two.
So, one point nine nine, so we're below that, we're not...
Right, right.
If we go to that.
That's for majority, though.
Fred, or Mike, I'm sorry.
One, one last thing, if we had a million and a half, that's hot enough to do any of the projects that make any big difference.
I don't disagree with you, Fred, but that...
But, 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 hear me, hear me out, so, I'm, I'm, I think I could be what's called the pivotal vote in this thing, I'm just telling you, I'm not, I'm not in favor of doing something that's not gonna really get the job done, and I'm not in favor of putting it up to where the people don't get to vote on something that's gonna be pretty expensive.
On the larger projects, I think we anticipate we're gonna probably have to go to bonding, that's where we're gonna get some, you know, direct input from the people. This is not a pay-as-you-go project that we have here, because we can't do it, I agree with you, it's, this is just to get some of the preliminary work done, and our participation, we can't do more than that, because of our limitations, see how much we, we raise with the ad valorem? I mean, it's, you know, nine million dollars, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
You know, that's not enough to do projects that are fifteen million dollars.
So, Fred, what do you wanna do today, what's your whole picture here? In other words, one is have the vote, um, referendum on, uh, large projects, how does that relate to the ad valorem and...
Well, it, it, it all ties into the water management district that we're trying to create.
Right.
And it ties into what we're gonna do with the ad valorem.
Right.
Um, at this, at this point, I, I don't think we should lower the ad valorem, because this other thing I already mentioned, so that, that would be where I would be, and then, we get into the other thing, formally approve it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something that's gonna say, if we don't do it this way, I ain't voting for it, and that just might...
That a riddle?
But what, yeah, but what, what...
What alternative do you have?
Right, what would you wanna do for the, for the millage rate?
The millage rate, I would...
Keep it the same, or, as, right now?
For the day, I would, I would stay with what we got, for a lot of good reasons, not only, uh, what I've just talked about, but also that other thing that's looming on the twenty twenty ballot, it would more than likely, highly likely pass if it, if it, if it goes, and if they've got the signatures, everything's all set, just the wording on the ballot that they're playing with.
Uh, Greg?
No, I was just gonna, I mean, I was just gonna really just take the consensus, I mean, right now, I'm prepared to keep it where it is at one eight seven three zero, make the motion and, and see where it goes, but, kinda what Fred's saying, more so, and I've preached about it for the last three and a half years, things are starting to break, we need to have the money, we need to have some extra money for neighborhood services, from parks and wrecks, to this place, uh, to, to lower millage, I just don't see the, the advantage of it, when you're really talking, you know, like we talked about, you move it up one cent, that's a hundred and five dollars, a hundred and five thousand dollars, that's twenty-one dollars, roughly. roughly, you know, per person, I mean, per household. I just don't think it's that big of a savings that's, you know, heck, that's a bottle of soda every day, a cup of coffee every day, but it's not that much money, twenty-one dollars. As Ann said, we're talking a difference from rollback to here is three hundred thousand dollars, you know, in a, in a thirty.
Hey, well, it's two hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Two hundred and sixty, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
We went to roll.
I mean, if we went to rollback, which is the same money as what we got last year is the difference. So our new money is two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty whatever four. That, that's not a lot of money when you're talking a, you know, thirty-five square mile, fifty thousand people, visitors that come here. I mean, we need it for the infrastructure, if it's nothing more. I, to be honest with you, uh, the downtown at the Van Shell could use, use some, uh, some renovations, some upkeep, which is great now, but it could look so much better. It needs new lawns, it needs this, it needs that, you know? That's every one of parks. We have twenty-one parks here that are not disrated, get way on tear every year. So everything here has went on tear. To lower the taxes is, is, to me, is not responsible for us. So I just, I would make the motion, keep it there or take a higher.
Peter, then Mike.
Go ahead, Mike. Well, my main thing is I don't like the stormwater assessment, because looking at it in, in my district, that fifty dollars is anywhere from, uh, you know, at different houses that I chose in, in different areas or different values, it represents anywhere from like thirty to three hundred percent increase over what that person's paying to the city of Benita. So by going to the millage rate that would get us to the same money, it's a seventeen percent increase. So that's where I have a problem is, you know, we could have everybody pay seventeen percent more, or we can ask some people to pay three hundred percent more.
Yeah, but that percentage is, is a statistic that may not be valid because the lower your start, you know, that's, that's the nature of statistics.
Brilliant. So some people have been in these houses a long time.
I know.
Save Our Homes, they pay very little in taxes.
I understand where you're coming from, but we could look at it another way, that if they're only paying a hundred and twenty-two dollars to get all the services of Benita, that's pretty good, you know? So you can look at it two different ways. They're playing such a low, they're paying, you know, seventy-five dollars to get the parks, um, the stormwater management, the, the new roads, uh.
Downtown.
The downtown, all the three things, you know? We can look at it two different ways. So I, I, I think that's, that percentage analysis is not totally valid, and anyone that has statistics knows that is, you know? It's because your base is so low. That's why it's such a different number. And I'm, and, and, and again, the people you're talking about are the ones that would profit the most by our doing projects, because those are the ones that have no stormwater management, they're in the flooding district, and that's where all the resources are gonna go. I think the city should participate in that. I definitely do. So we can do part of it with our ad valorem C I P and some of it, we're gonna direct it to those areas that need it the most. That's why we have a, a proposal going out to state, you know, to the state to help us to do those areas. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we asked them to help us. That's not all that it's gonna take. We're gonna have to ante up for that. So anyway, um, it's hard to pay for things. It really is. It's so much easier to just say, let's spend this, let's spend that. But we, again, either we believe we have an existential issue here, which is stormwater management, or we don't. If that's not an, an issue, then we don't have to worry about this. We'll just do our parks, we'll do all this other stuff. I think when I leave here in three years, I wanna know that we made progress here so that our community can, can continue into the future. So it's a difference of opinion. It's a difference between a progressive tax and a fee for service. That's what we're talking about. And people who have higher valuations, you know, we, we, we're gonna pay a lot because it's not just, we're not paying every dollar that goes into this. We're still gonna have to pay it out of our general fund.
Peter, do you have something?
I did, yeah, I wanted to go back to Fred's point. I think that, I agree with Fred, uh, what, uh, part, maybe all of what Fred is saying in terms of if we're gonna, and we do have a need for very large projects. We know, for example, just what the project at Pine Lake is costing, we know what the project on Logan is costing, including the flood part of that. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. So I do think, you know, as last year, Cape Coral did a thing for parks, uh, really the same kinda concept that Fred's talking about, which is they laid out all the, it was parks in that case, all the major parks that they wanted improvements on. In that case, they said they wanted to borrow the money and they went out, uh, and they got a vote of, uh, the people. So Joe Corviello is mayor, led that, and they went out and they had a referendum for a lot of money for a lot of projects. I think that makes a lot of sense, um, as one point. But, yeah, maybe we differ a little on this. I don't know if we do. It doesn't mean today that we don't have a flood issue. It's the point somebody made, this Greg, we're gonna wait till twenty twenty. We have a flood issue in every district in this town. So yes, a million, a million and a half dollars isn't enough to solve all of it, but we have to start. And, you know, we've had a situation, in spite of all our valiant efforts up in Tallahassee, where we couldn't even get five hundred thou, five hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand bucks for a study. That's in, that study's in District Three and it's in Greg's District Two. So those people are as susceptible to flooding as they were two years ago, and we can't get the money outside, uh, to even have the initial engineering done with respect to the, the, the second step, let's say, engineering done with respect to the feasibility of a project there. I mean, that to me is a basic function of government. And, um, a million and a half won't solve it, but a million and a half is twice what we've asked from the legislature and haven't received for the last two years. So I agree with Fred, you know, we're not gonna raise the millage rate by five thousand percent to raise enough money for the tens of millions that are needed for real projects here. That should go to the people. But I do think that, um, in my view, we owe it to everybody in town, considering the flooding we've had, to have a stormwater utility and to fund that, maybe it's a modest way, a million, a million and a half. Now, how we fund it, I don't, Mike hasn't made a suggestion, but he's implying he would, is Mike implying he would have a slight increase in millage to fund it? Maybe there's a, a mix and match. May, maybe there's a lower assessment and a smaller millage increase dedicated toward funding that, which would not be a lot of money. I, I keep coming back to the context, you know, I, before I saw Ann's thing, I just pulled up, um, and I, and I think we lose the con, in my humble opinion, we lose the context sometimes. So here's a tax bill in Benita for a fellow who has, I think it's a three hundred thousand dollar home about, uh, with Save Our Homes in it. He and his wife pay three thousand five hundred forty-three dollars a year. That's their, that's their tax bill, three thousand five hundred forty-three dollars a year. The city is a hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We're basically kind of in kindergarten here in terms of how we're spending money compared to where all the tax money is going. And that's where Mike's percent thing comes in, you know? This guy's paying a hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Well, even twenty-five bucks is, you know, roughly speaking, uh, twelve percent or more But we've gotta solve the problem. We've gotta solve this flood problem. We all agree on that. So that's, that's my two cents. I, I make a, well, Mike, what do you wanna do?
Well, I was thinking about making a motion to move it to point nine five nine three, because on the trim notice, everybody's gonna notice, you know, what we're looking at to increase taxes. Because right now, I don't feel that, you know, they're seeing that with this, uh, stormwater assessment. I'm not saying I wanna go to the nine five nine three. But that would be the maximum that it could go to, and I think people will take a little more notice then.
Well, it's not the maximum, we could go to more than that, and just set.
Well, I mean, we set the max that it could go to during the.
A million and a half.
Once it's in the trim notice, you.
Right, well, but that's not our max, we can go. We can go up to what, what'd you say?
One point nine nine two. Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying. So people see that, what we're looking to raise taxes by, that one, one and a half million dollars. They'll notice it when it comes in on a trim notice saying that, hey, you're gonna be paying this much more.
Could I suggest we do half that? And this is just a max? This is not an increase?
Well, if I'm doing it, I'm doing it more as a statement, so.
Statement. Oh, statement.
Do we have to do this today?
Um, it has to be to the, but by August fourth is when we.
We can do it tomorrow. Why, you know, we've raised some good points here. Why don't we, I, I would suggest.
Right.
We all sharpen our pencils a little bit, we further discussion, and let's have more discussion. I'm not saying.
Right.
We don't have more discussion today. Let's have, let's exhaust the pro, the conversation for today and then include it in tomorrow night's meeting. Yeah, tomorrow night.
And I, I would piggyback on your comment because maybe we can even kick the can down the road a little more.
No, I'm saying kicking, kicking it down till tomorrow.
No, I'm.
Can't kick it anymore.
Right, we, we can. Well, we can.
It, it, August fourth, we don't have a schedule.
We won't have another meeting.
Unless you.
Well, this is just a maximum, this is.
Well, here's, well, here's a question, though, let's, let's, I, I think I know what the mayor would vote. There's a, there's a few people on council that's not gonna vote to raise the bill, it's or, there's a few that may not even wanna keep it at this, they may wanna lower. I guess that's what I'm saying, the reason to kick it down the road till tomorrow here, let's say.
Well, I'd like.
Three or four of us aren't gonna vote for.
Yeah, but I'd like to think.
Nine five or nine five whatever.
But I'd like, my own personal view is, I'd like to think about what Mike's saying here. Think about it overnight.
We have to log this third, Greg, I hear you, buddy, but one more day's okay.
No, I just, I just can't.
Yeah, I'd like to do it by tomorrow, but I don't wanna. Yeah, no, not, and I think, well, nodding the heads, tomorrow we'll decide.
Could we just have a sense, does anybody wanna lower the, the, the rate?
In, in my heart of hearts, of course. However, no, 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 but, no, no, let me answer the question you asked and I'm answering.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay? In my heart of hearts, of course, but we have some real issues that cost some real money.
So realistically, would, would you vote to lower the rate? Other than your heart? I mean, like if you, if we said, let's lower the rate, how would you vote?
If we could find this money somewhere else? Never mind. Yeah, right, no, exactly. You're gonna ask it the way you wanna ask it and I'm gonna answer it the way I wanna answer it. Fair enough? We're both adults.
And Mike, what do you mean by a statement? Are you, you're honestly.
Well, 'cause when people get a trim notice in the mail, they're, they're gonna take notice that, hey, the city's raising my taxes.
Right.
Well, no, no, I just wanna, but I mean, do you, but, but you, you, I mean, ask it
this, I mean, do you believe that the flood risk is certain, is such that we should be raising the taxes for that purpose? Because then you have to explain to people, yeah, I mean, we're trying to solve flooding in Benita Springs.
Like.
Or what?
I think there's projects that can be done. I think solving flooding.
Well, solving.
Probably never gonna happen.
I agree with that.
I've been here long enough to know that, you know, certain areas flood every so many years, you know? Yeah, it's a tragedy, but, you know, trying to tame mother nature is not a, I, in my view, I don't think it's really a possible task. I, I think you can like put things off for longer and longer, but then when it finally does happen, it's gonna be worse than it was before. So, I mean, like on a grand scheme of things, I don't think we're gonna solve flooding.
Well, yeah, I, fair point. I, you know, and Jim Beaver, every time he gave a presentation for five minutes at the beginning, explained you'll never solve the flooding. But this clearly, I, I, I just, if I might say, uh, you know, we had twenty neighborhoods that had serious water, and to them, that's not to be expected time after time. One is up by the golf course, all right? Where you had water lapping at the doors for two weeks and went this far away from a flood. Another was in Fred's district. Now thankfully, we have spent, it's a lot of money to, and it's, and that's, and that's gonna get solved, or at least it's gonna get vastly improved. So I shouldn't have said solve the total flood issue in Benita, but yeah, I mean, it went maybe one or two neighborhoods. Another one is in District Three on, on the, on the east side, where I've spent a lot of time with the people, starting, you know, three years ago. And, uh, on the west side of Imperial Parkway, where clearly, uh, there can be things done so they don't flood again. So I, I don't think, I mean, this, this, and that, and that's what Beaver's report was all about, and even the Wall Street Report to the county was all about. There's a lot that can be done and should be done.
Thanks, Peter, for that. You framed up a good issue that Matt, and I know it's, in a sense, apples to oranges, but would now be a good time to talk about the program that we need to implement before mid-August, correct? To the neighbors down on Quinn Street?
Oh, the, um, the buyout program?
Correct.
That's on your, there's actually a green sheet on your.
Sure. But could we just kinda bring that to, for the public and everybody's?
Yes.
Get that on people's minds as well?
So, so the large, um, dollars that were tied to another arm of the federal, um, government system, which was the community development block grants, uh, C D D G, or became available just recently. We got a notice of funding. And so we're, we're gonna be asking you tomorrow to authorize us to, to utilize a flooding consultant to go out and hold neighborhood meetings, and it's a voluntary program for buyouts. We, we don't know what the result will be, but, um, there's a fairly short timeline on, you know, getting that interest level and submitting applications. So we will be asking you for that, um, here at the next meeting tomorrow, and then shortly after assuming approval, we'll be conducting those type meetings and, you know, getting a sense of what that level of interest is within the community for buyout. Now, it, it's a federal program, you, you know, we've already submitted through voluntary buyout programs earlier, last year really, and, um, you know, we haven't heard back, so it's, there are long timeframes, we don't know the outcome, but, but that has finally come forward with that big slug of money from that.
But we have to get approved funding for that, right? Or is it, what, if you have an application, you get it? How does that work?
Nothing's automatic with the federal government.
This is a competitive application.
It was a competitive, so.
It's not a, an allotment, like for, it's not an allotment that we are.
So even if we had five people to say, five me out?
We, we have three confirmed right now.
This, this, so, the first was three confirmed, that was a, a different pool of money. This is broader, so we will be soliciting that interest in the neighborhood. But no, it's not a pot of money that is handed to the city that can be dolled out. It's still a competitive nature and it'll be reviewed.
The three that was confirmed, that we didn't get any money, they, they're still there.
But they're still.
They're, they're still there, and we're gonna continue through it. That's a different application, it's actually more competitive and it, and there's different requirements. That's why it was only three that qualified, they have to be repetitive loss.
Mm-hmm. And, and isn't there another pot of money that TMA has that where they'll, they'll give you a forty thousand dollar grant and then they get you a low-interest SBA mortgage? And you tear your home down, elevate it, or you elevate one that's there, or maybe building a second store that's got to live in here and convert the bottom floor to garage?
That's an annual program and it is, there is, it is very competitive, um, as well, competitive process. There's only so many in the state of Florida, they grant each year, because the funds come to the state and then it's through the, uh, competition nationally as well.
So I just thank you for that, Matt. I just, in case I wasn't on everybody's radar screen, so we'll have further discussion on that tomorrow. So I just thank you for that, Matt, I just, in case I wasn't on everybody's radar screen, so, we'll have further discussion on that tomorrow, so Fred, do you have something?
No, I thought you just raised your hand. I got, I got a quick question, kinda following up on Peter's to, to Mike, with making a statement, so, let's say tomorrow you do make it, or tonight, today, or whatever, and nine nine five three, nobody walks in and complains about it, and you get no phone call, are you gonna prepare to vote for nine nine three then, or would you still vote it down? That's my question, there's no sense of playing games with people.
Right.
We're not gonna do it. I mean, I, I mean, we're grown adults here, and there's no sense of playing games with people's emotions, and getting them all riled up, when we know in our heart of hearts, there's no way, and it's God's screen, and there's, that this council is gonna vote for nine nine five three, or nine five, nine three, so why even play around with it? Let's, let's get to the meat and potatoes of it, let's do what we say we're gonna do, and make them, you know, let you go with it. I mean, I don't wanna sit here and, and play games with, with the people, and get phone calls, and a hundred emails, that this is outrageous, and, and then we know that we're not gonna do it. I mean, if we think that eight, eight one seven three is what we're gonna do, then let's do it, if we think we can stomach it, as, as the council, and as the politicians, as the representatives of our district, then let's pick that number, whether it's a, the, the rollback rate, the rate we're at right now, or one of these examples. And if we do it tomorrow, that's great, or today, I'm just saying, I don't think it's right to play emotions with the people, if, if we know in our heart right now that there are four people here that's not gonna vote for the nine five, then don't even put it out there. Don't even vote for a second of it, don't do it, just to let them put it on the trim notice, so everybody can see it, 'cause all that's gonna do is just, pardon my French, piss people off. You're, each one of us, all seven of us are gonna give twenty emails, thirty emails, heck, on this other issue with the, just building, we've gotten ten to fifteen emails. So, you, you don't think they're gonna read this, and, hats in the back, he's gonna vote that, he's gonna write tomorrow morning that the council is looking at nine five, and, you know, all heck's gonna break loose. So I'm just, I don't wanna waste the people's time, that's not what we're serious about, I really don't. And, and, and Mr. Mayor, I know that, I know you're, you're, you're feeling on it, so I, I know you're not for it at all, so.
But I'm also, uh, of the mindset, answering the question here again, the way I wanna answer it, is that we find a hybrid and a happy medium to figure out how to solve the stormwater management issue. That's exactly where my head's at.
Well, to answer the question.
So what does that mean, and what does that look like, I'd like a day, I'd like all of us to get a day to figure that out, and I have to believe that's fair.
To me, it would depend on.
And if it isn't, and I need to sleep on it, then I need to sleep on it, I'll be noncommittal today.
No, no, that's fine.
Until I sleep on it.
It, it would depend on what I hear, and then also depending on what happens with the stormwater assessment.
But that's my, I guess that's my point, we're not gonna have an, we're, the stormwater assessment, if we choose Councilman Forbes, if he gets his way, it's not gonna be voted on until 2020, so that means no projects.
He didn't say, he didn't say that.
He said on the ballot.
He didn't say that.
Did he, Fred?
No, I, I think stormwater assessment is gonna, they're gonna send out, we had to do certain.
What did he say, put it on the ballot?
The old, in this cycle, right?
If, if tomorrow, if you move forward, even though it's not making the final determination on whether there'll be an assessment, we would then start mailing out the notices for the assessment after.
No, there, to, to, there's a second step, so tomorrow, the first step is to determine whether or not you want to establish the actual mechanism.
Right.
Then we would come back to your August seventh meeting, and that, we would determine, that is the last time for the discussion.
For sending notice.
He would be giving us direction whether or not you wanted us to mail letters and send notice.
Let me ask a question about that, sorry, Fred, well, go ahead.
Well, no, so then, here would be where I would be, I would, I had planned to go along with it for the first year, because we can't vote on it before it would go for a year. I still would wanna see us vote, put it on the ballot.
Yep.
With more realistic figures of what we really need, and if it passes, then we can do whatever we wanna do with the ad valorem, but at least the people have spoken on that spatial tax, or that spatial purpose, and that, that money will be spent for stormwater projects, no matter what.
So, I'm sorry, so I clarify, were you saying that you, the assessment would be on the ballot, or the actual implementation of the stormwater utility?
No, it will be an up and down vote on, on the utility.
The key.
Figures, starting out with a more realistic what we need in money, that would be what I.
Let me ask a question.
But I, I would certainly wanna consult with Derek, Matt, and Arlene to make sure that we got a motion that makes sense, that would work if it passes, and all that, I don't wanna.
To address issues now, and then for the long-term issues, and really, really expensive issues, it goes on the ballot.
Right.
A year from November.
Yeah. So can I clarify, because it goes back to what Councilman DeWitt asked me a while ago, about, you have a, a decision point, a milestone tomorrow, and that sets up the mechanism.
All right.
It doesn't mean you tax anyone.
Right.
But it, that mechanism, if you voted it up tomorrow, would allow individual communities that have the responsibility currently for stormwater management to come to the city and try to work through small projects that they finance themselves, but through this utility. Then, August seventh, I'm bad with dates.
Next one.
August seventh, we would, if, if you advance.
Twenty of the anniversary, by the way, August seventh, congratulations.
Let's talk to my wife.
Yeah, yeah, no, not with my wife.
If you advanced tomorrow's vote, then August seventh, we would come back to you and say, th- this is go-no-go decision on the, on the, the revenue side of it, on the assessment. This is what the letter would look like to each individual homeowner, it will be different for commercial properties, uh, you know, the individual homeowner's fairly the same, fifty dollars in ERU. Uh, but we would show that to you one more time for a go-no-go decision on the assessment. If, if you tell us, forget it, so, the assessment part would then be tabled for another discussion at another time, similar, and then you could approach it the way Councilman Forbes is talking, or, or however you decide. If you advance us on the seventh, and this is all on an assumption that you advance us tomorrow, this issue, then the letters would go out, they would meet their statutory requirement, and the final vote on this, that year's assessment, which right now is the fifty dollars for ERU, uh, would happen on the ninth, the meeting that you just moved, and, and that would be the final up-down vote for that year's assessment. And then we'd start collecting money, and then you would start collecting money, or going through that process.
So tomorrow, if we vote yes on that, it would allow individual communities to basically assess themselves if they wanted, even if we didn't go ahead with a citywide assessment?
Correct.
Above and beyond kind of the quote-unquote package deal, right, I mean, that, citywide package deal, this would allow them options A, B, C, and D, all the above, none of the, well, not none of the above.
If you advanced tomorrow's item, you, you still haven't finalized the financial side of it, and it would give more options to the communities that currently exist, who are currently responsible for their stormwater, that for whatever reason haven't been able to, to maintain it. And, and the, the basic option is, it would allow them to come talk to the city, we could develop a project, you'd still have to vote on it.
Right.
Um, but it would allow them to finance it over a longer period of time, currently, if a community, you know, wanted to do a large project, they kinda have to get those funds.
But that would be external from the citywide package of stormwater that we're discussing?
Yes.
Correct.
It's a piece of it.
I just wanna ask a question, Matt, it's on the same subject, do you, based on up-to-date, do you have any good reason to believe that there are any communities, uh, within Benita that are gonna come in and talk to you about taxing themselves, so to speak, for improvement?
Actually, there is one that, uh, about a month and a half ago, that I did speak with, um, that articulated, they followed the, the meetings, um, and they are looking at stormwater improvements, they do know that it is their responsibility, and they do see a value in a positive action from tomorrow, that's one community, but.
The, the other issue part of this is, is we move forward with our internal stormwater project, it will be an opportunity for more updates, you all, that we are gonna have to find that there are communities that are not in compliance with the codes. And so a discussion we'll have to have is, how are they going to become into compliance, what is the timeframe we're gonna give them, and then, of course, they're gonna be looking for direction from the city on how they can possibly finance those, because as we move through those ERUs, which are gonna have an update on, at the, uh, the environmental permitting, um, and once we determine whether or not they're in compliance or not, that, that's the next level of discussion we have to have.
This is to solve flooding, this is not some Mickey Mouse, they're not in compliance with something, but this is.
Correct, this is, this is if they're not in compliance with their storm drain.
Storm drain, it's.
They haven't, you know, they haven't maintained the proper meter system, and they're probably gonna need quite a bit of money and impairments to make sure it's brought up to, so that they're not causing a detriment to the neighboring properties.
I'd like to make a motion that we actually consider the millage today, to separate the issue for tomorrow from the stormwater management, and to keep the millage the same.
Second. Is a motion to keep the millage rate the same, and we'll repeat that millage rate as point eight one seven three zero? And there's been a second, council, is there further discussion?
Just to say, that's probably where I am, but I think we, I'd like to have the benefit of thinking about this overnight, so I'm gonna vote no for that reason.
Council, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McLean?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
No.
Councilman Carver?
No.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Carr?
Aye.
Peter Simmons?
Aye.
While we're on the topic.
What, funny you should ask.
Um, let me just mention something else, 'cause I think it's obviously been a very good conversation, um, different, same book, different chapter, um, stormwater, Southwest Florida, South Flor, Southwest Florida Water Management District. This is on the issue that some of us were aware of last year, I don't know all of us were, but this notion of swapping out the Okeechobee tax for the Big Cypress. Now, we really haven't had a discussion about that on council, but last year, there was, and it, it ended up not happening, certain people in the legislature didn't want it to happen, but we're in a new era now, uh, and, um, I think it's worthwhile to talk about. So, if you look at your tax bill, actually, this type will have our hand, same. Um, there are three taxes that we pay as Benita citizen, residents, to the Water Management District. One is so-called district-wide, second is Everglades Construction, and the third is so-called Okeechobee Basin, okay? If you're twenty feet away here, or a mile away, in Collier County, you don't pay Okeechobee Basin, you pay Big Cypress, all right? Now, Big Cypress, some of you know this, but others don't, so I guess, so, Big Cypress is part of the Water Management District, but it's a separate unit, it's basically Collier County. Um, the Big Cypress Basin is larger than Collier County geographically, but when it was set up, it was limited to, um, to Collier County. And the thing that struck me most about the Big Cypress Basin is that they have, it's not just the money, it's the fact that they have a dedicated business plan with respect to flood control. They have a, a three-year plan, they have a five-year plan, we don't have, with respect, and we have some great people now in the Water Management District, but we don't have any plan to speak of from the Water Management District, other than, you know, clean the, clean the, we're a rap. So, I think it's worthwhile for us to think about, uh, for future date, the conversation, uh, the feasibility of seeing if we can swap the Okeechobee tax for the Big Cypress tax, and become part of a big, a larger Big Cypress Basin. And it's not just the funding that comes here, because it's still under the Water Management District, it's the initiative that, uh, that can exist with respect to that.
Arlene, do you want, no, thank you, Peter.
Sorry?
I know Matt just stepped out, but.
I can explain, but go ahead, Arlene.
Yeah. We, we have some outreach from staff level that they've asked us to set a meeting with them to have a preliminary discussion in terms of all of our joining stormwater needs.
Yeah, yeah.
From, from the staff level, um.
And, yeah, go ahead, just, sorry.
So the answer to the greatest question is, it has to be blessed by either the legislature or, and/or by the Water Management District administratively.
And I wouldn't suggest to you that, or just tell you, not suggest you, that all of that is in motion. We're in violent agreement.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that take away, does that take away any of our, what I'm looking for, say-so, opinionated, uh, whatever with the release of Okeechobee, hey, you're not in the Okeechobee Basin anymore, you don't have a say-so in here in the Cypress.
We're talking about Big Cypress, right when you stepped out. And I just, yeah, when you ran out, I don't wanna talk about that, that's not what we're talking about. And we are in motion for staff meetings, I've had discussions with others, Matt, will you wanna give us an update on where we are? With the, with the meetings on Big Cypress?
We have not had the meeting yet, we've been, we've, there's been outreach from their staff to have a discussion with us on our general stormwater and, and water management needs, and that's, and I think that's, that's fairly, as we, but we can send out an email update, and then we can provide an update to council as soon as we have the meeting.
But I think it would be beneficial for the council, for our staff, to give us a presentation on what we're talking about here. Um, I happen to be for it, but I think all of council ought to be totally briefed, you know, whether it's at a meeting, or however it's done.
Right.
On, uh, the benefits and/or possible detriments of it. Um, I don't really see any detriments, because we're still part of, um, the Water Management District, it's not like we're not part of it, it's just that we have a separate initiative, or have the potential for a separate initiative that could benefit us, so.
And we don't have to do it in this format, but I'll just take this opportunity to let you know I've had a discussion with Chauncey Goss, who's the head of South Florida Water Management, and it might, it'll either be August, or it'll be September, but we're gonna have a town hall meeting here at Benita Springs City Hall to talk all things water with. Chauncey Goss will be a panelist, and another panelist will be, uh, Dr. Parsons from FGCU, that runs the South Florida, uh, FGCU Vester Marine Lab down on Benita Beach Road. Jerry's out, but probably there'll be a third panelist, and we're gonna have a town hall meeting here, and then we're gonna have one six months later, like in February or March during season, before season. And, you know, we can use that to have the discussion, or we can do it at city council, and we have meetings that are underway, and Matt Feeny stepped out when, right, uh, when, when he, but I just, I'm not trying to be coy here, Matt, and I appreciate your update, but.
No, we.
I guess we can say candidly, we're in violent agreement, is my best way of saying it.
We have a staff meeting July twenty-fourth, um, that we've been invited to, um, so I think once we have that meeting, we have some additional information, we can report back.
Can I make a suggestion, if staff can, I mean, I can dig it out, Senator Arlene, she can send it around, but if you go on the Big Cypress website, you can find on there, this is the thing that most got my attention, their, um, strategic, this is where I was looking for, their strategic plan, and, you know, it's something of beauty uh, in terms of how they're gonna make things safer from a stormwater perspective, and it happens to be in Collier County. Um, and just circulate that, so council have the benefit of seeing that. And then the other thing is, maybe just get anybody's tax bill from Collier, just go on Collier PA and get one, um, and you can send that around and show how they're taxed for the Water Management District versus how we're taxed.
Fred, did you have something, you had your hand up earlier.
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
So then.
Well, I, I think of what Peter's saying, it also, the, the amount you pay is less than we paid.
It actually was a little less down.
Per, per capita, yeah, that was the other reason some, some wanted to get.
Yeah.
Same shift, but, but the way it's being done this time, we're, we're working with Big Cypress, and we're working with South Florida Water Management, which is a whole new board, and that's another story, it's a much better way of trying to do it with legislation. You end up upsetting the people you, my, my.
And I had, I.
And both discussions have been had.
Yeah, and I.
Just so you understand, and I think you do, and I know you understand.
Right, and I could report that I, I have a previous, where I had a lunch with Chauncey when he first, breakfast with Chauncey when he first got on, he's not, I'm not committing Chauncey to anything, we talked about this, among other issues, so.
There is, there is one thing I wanna go back to on, on the previous discussion, that I wanna probably think about in this, uh, twenty-four hours between now and tomorrow, and that is, if we would, let's just say hypothetically, we hold the tax rate that, or hypothetically, the tax rate stays exactly what it is today. Um, you wanna think about how that's gonna play up north when we're going for those asks. I, I remember one conversation we had with the, one of the most senior ranking officials in the Senate, and we made the comment about, well, we know that the people up in Panhandle are gonna get a big chunk of money because of the hurricane, and they, and they really were desolate. And Greg, no, no one else could better testify than Greg, 'cause he was up there for a while. Um, but the comment was made, well, you know.
made, well, you know, there's some, some people here, it wasn't specific, they feel that you all have enough money anyway. You don't need.
But it is, but it is a rich community.
Basically, it was, it was, without putting anybody on the spot.
But you're not allowed to mention even in Lee County that we're a donor community. So, maybe that as it may.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And we weren't talking to county commissioners.
Right? No, I know, I know.
The obvious thing, all those things play into it. And I think, I think we wanna think about what we do and we got 24 hours to think on. I think Mike's points are very good. Everybody's made very good points.
Putting John Dolma.
Putting John Dolma, yeah.
It's thinkless by a science.
Yes. Just gotta say, Arlene, do we, anything else you wanna go over, or Ann, or council?
That was all. We had to present, so.
Make a motion. Do we, do we want to vote on that?
We did vote on the millage.
No, no, we, yeah, but we need a motion to move the discussion for tomorrow. Is that what you said before?
Yeah. I make a motion. Why don't we make a motion if you, so we can continue tomorrow? And that's why I voted no right away, because I was supporting the mayor and then he voted yes. But whatever.
Second.
He said he wanted 24 hours.
I said, the millage was saved, right? I said, yes.
Keep up with you, Peter.
Do more with less. Yeah, go ahead, Fred.
I think we should wait tomorrow to vote on the millage to make sure that we've done.
We are.
We are. No, no. We wait.
I just think that's been said.
He means wait.
After we've talked about and done whatever we're gonna do on stormwater management.
Oh, okay.
We can place it under the city administration items.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of natural order of things. As long as it allows that, we'll be doing. Okay. Who's got a motion in second counsel for the discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corvus?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. All right, Derek? I'm sorry. Let's finish the voting before I talk on your word and how's that. Fred, do you vote?
He started.
Okay, all right. Soft little voice couldn't hear you. Derek?
Before you leave, I wanted to, this is the first opportunity I've had, and I know that so many of you have been traveling and I need to get everyone's schedules, but we'd like to set up, David Eric and I would like to set another executive session, discuss issues with respect to two separate matters. This will probably want to be a separate meeting altogether. So, I am seeking again advice in the BG Mine versus City of Benita Springs case. There are actually five cases in that, or four cases in that matter, five, I apologize. And they are 17-CA000381, 17-CA004036, 18-CA003465, 18-CA006017. Those are all in the 20th judicial circuit. And the appeal of the Dowa decision on the comp plan, BG Mine versus Benita Springs in case number 1D194, 1403 for the first district court appeals. In addition to that, I am also seeking, at the request of special counsel, David Theriak, to discuss the WCI matters. Two cases, WCI Communities LLC and WCI Communities Inc. versus City of Benita Springs in case number 17-CA3966 in the 20th judicial circuit, and City of Benita Springs, the WCI Communities LLC and WCI Communities Inc., case 16-CA004027 in the 20th judicial circuit. So, but I wanna do that because I'm required to make that announcement at a public meeting, to request that we set up the executive session, discuss the settlement strategies, following up at least on, on one. And then involvement, it'll be my first involvement with WCI matters. I will start reaching out to each of one of you. I'm also waiting on David Theriak's availability. We'll try to set up a day where we can get all that together, get it done maybe with, between breaks. It looks like, just based on your agenda tomorrow, I didn't wanna try and stuff that in. But I'll reach out to each of you and maybe tomorrow, we can even announce when we, we have a date set. That's all from me, okay?
Anybody else? Anything else? Okay. Public comment? Members of the public that would like to speak? Staff, anything? Team? No? Okay. Motion to adjourn? Unless anybody has anything else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, team. Okay, thanks.